Fire in the name of the Lord. Records meeting for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. And and our here starting with Director. And it's they are.
Uh, General. Two. Uh, and it's nice to have them in.
And Dave Larson, District Five.
Paul Vernon, Superdome.
And who else is your board?
And.
You have Director Hoover.
Director Hoover.
Sam?
No, no, no.
Okay. Uh, I guess it's okay. Uh, so welcome, everybody, just here in the room with us as well as. Uh, folks at Gens Online. Um. So we're gonna start with our. Welcome message coming from the previous conversations book reminder to everybody during the meeting to stay engaged. Experience this number be vulnerable speaker through. Expect and accept non closure. And then. Our um. And recognition. We in the title of school district acknowledge that the land we where we teach, tolerate, learn and play is a traditional land of the first people of Seattle. To do watch and look to people past and present in honor of gratitude to the land itself. And the Duwanish and Nukashu tribes. For the public school district, we have responsibility for the stewardship of the sand. And they recognize that Duwanish and Nukashu people have been living and working here since time immemorial. Uh, so we're gonna do the. I'm not sure why I didn't. I believe in steward by the United States of America. And to the other world's concerns, one nation. In it as well, liberty and justice for all. Um. I mean, nothing to approve the agenda.
So. Second.
And you have seconded it's gonna be approved tonight's agenda. All voters say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. Director Hoover. Okay, so Director Hoover, um, District One is now online with us. Great.
Mama.
Yeah.
Mama.
Oh.
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
Hello, we hear it is. Great to have you here. Um. Let's see, we'll take. Is there anybody any public comments that have signed up? Previously or on there or if there's anybody online wants to make a public comment on something, you can. Use the raise hand function in Zoom or you can. Type uh, the request in chat. And we can see if there's anybody who wants to do any. Other comments. We also have a public comment period that will end of the meeting should anyone want to. Take advantage of it then. So seeing no one. We'll move on to uh, the reports. We start with our. Student representative, Desmond.
Um, not much has gone on, but I did go, I did turn the damn hill yesterday. At in yeah, it's very fun. Um, it was kind of rather quickly short, but. But um, there was a lot of information and. I think we'll take that information and we'll work it into our board somehow, some way. And then um. I will be having a meeting with the. Director of Civil Education, obviously in Washington for that page program. Uh, that we talked about.
Okay, so when you're down in Olympia, one of the things that's available to high school students is to be a page in the Senate or the House. Which is basically you go down there for a weekend and you get to run the errands of the legislature. But the good news is you get to do it with the students and you also get to see you have those on the behind the scenes in the legislature. So that's a program that we've had um, in the past, I think the last one we get students done there was actually some of our eighth grade students. Uh, we're down there for a week and that's been the time. So anyway, finishes.
We're gonna hopefully bring it up again uh, for the best. So maybe some of students can try to be there. Um, there are. The technically the session isn't over yet, so there's still a few, I think two months until one month. Sometimes.
The individual.
Then we know, so yes, and so we can set up some time our students would want that because it's free. Definitely they do what's happened.
Oh, yeah. So you got the question answered about doing your days and you're really. Okay. Good. So, yeah, you know, if there's anything that can contact Dennis and um, maybe a follow up. Um, okay, next item is our safety inclusion task force update. So this is the task force that was edited by um. Director Hoover and the. Her vice chair is online with us. Um, and one show who's. Um, I think I wrote down here. Yeah. Maybe introduce, yeah. So she's the sexual assault prevention specialist at the Harborview Abuse and Trauma Center. And co-chair, your Title Nine Task Force. So she's gonna give us a little update on what's been going on with that um. Committee, so. We can get her where she can speak. Uh, there she is.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, thank you for inviting me. I'll just take a couple minutes of your time to provide a quick little update. Um, thank you for the introduction. Again, my name is Monica Shell. I use she they pronouns. Um, again, I'm a sexual assault prevention specialist at the Harborview Abuse and Trauma Center or HATC. And I'm co-chair of uh, the Title Nine Task Force. Um, so we meet twice monthly for about an hour and a half each meeting. There are sixteen members of the task force, including two new members we just added to get more um, district level perspectives. We get about, I'd say like four to eight participants uh, who attend each meeting mostly due to um. Conflicting schedules and people's capacity with other workloads. Um, the first thing we did as a group was determine our goals. Our vision statement is to reduce instances of sexual assault and improve. Reporting pathways to better support survivors. We strive to serve our community by creating a culture of consent and safety where young people understand their rights. Um, next, we reviewed current policies, procedures and materials within the Taquilla School District. Such as Procedure uh, thirty-two oh five and Policy Thirty-two oh five. Which detail uh, the Title Nine Policy and Procedure. We discussed improvements that could be made to the policy and the procedure to better support survivors and be more in line with. Best practices and sexual assault prevention. Uh, we also discussed revamping Title Nine Know Your Rights posters to pose them around the high schools so students understand their their rights. Um, our next goal is to have listening sessions with students. Uh, the goal of these listening sessions is to hear directly from students. Um, what they notice in schools and what recommendations they would have. Um, to better prevent and respond to instances of sexual assault, harassment and uh, gender-based harm. Um, and another goal we have is to write and distribute a professional, sorry, a survey for professional staff. Uh, within the Taquilla School District. The survey would allow us to ask what supports they need, um, what recommendations they have for the district. And what practices are currently in place. Um, as of right now, all of our projects are still in the beginning or planning stages. We have zero deliverables as of yet. Um, a lot of what we've been doing is reviewing materials and discussing what changes we would like to make. Um, because of which I strongly urge the board to allow the task force to continue meeting for a minimum of six months to a year. Um, I don't think we can accomplish much before the April deadline. Um, so I would really love to continue the work um. For at least six months to a year to accomplish our goals and make sure that we can actually give y'all some deliverables. So um, that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions, comments?
Great work.
Yeah, I think it's. Go ahead, Director Hoover.
Sorry, I was just kind of curious from a um, kind of a procedural standpoint. Um, uh, what would we need to do to um, kind of make that official extension of the task force? And I think um, the the other kind of question, this should be more for Monica. Um, uh. Kind of how would that impact the current makeup of the group? Um, and are the folks that, uh, yeah, I guess how would that how would that impact the current makeup of the the group?
I can, I can answer first. Um, I checked with the group if this is something that they wanted to do before it was a suggestion that I made. Um. Everyone who attended the meeting said yes. I don't know for um. I don't know exactly how it would impact maybe like students who are on summer break or things like that. So I don't have like the exact like numbers of who would continue, but the people who attended were in um. Full support of continuing for a minimum of six months.
So as far as uh. Extending, I don't recall, was there a, we do a. A resolution to initiate this task force?
I think there was.
Okay.
So I think particularly what we can do is just bring um. Uh, formal request or an extension to the next board meeting and maybe um. Put that for, you know, twelve months if you want to, because you can also order if you have the recommendations and you don't have to continue to do the extensions. So. Um. That would give you the most flexibility. And then I think with the group, uh, I was in there, uh. Uh, I was gonna mention it during my super camera report, but I think then if we can also figure out. Which teams might be on there, seniors and how to have other students come on who may be interested in continuing that one comes to the next board.
Okay, so so we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting to um. Extend it on resolution and then um. Anything else that needs to be. Taken care of on this one?
I'm sorry, it's a tiny bit harder for me to hear the people in person. Did y'all say you would intend on extending for a year?
Yeah, so what we'll do is so we, this is, that's where it's got initiated by a board resolution. Uh, that I think had probably the date in there. So we'll simply at our next meeting would uh, consider a change to that resolution to extend it for. Uh, you know, a year, let's say, and then. Yeah, and then I should take care of that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much. Uh, Monica, and um, we'll look forward to the recommendations. Um, and I don't, hopefully, you don't, uh. Uh, if you get recommendations for changing policies, I wrote before the end of the line, you know, you can bring those whenever it's ready. And wait for the twelve months of it, so. Okay, great. Thank you very much. And we'll go on to the next item, which is super technical.
Great, uh, thank you. I have a couple of items. One is a follow up to the Title Nine Task Force. Um. So I joined that as well to uh, help support the work that's going on. It's great meeting that was happening. Um, I enjoyed meeting the members and I think the conversation. Um, recommendations are gonna be great. I think it's good with the people trying to figure out how to support uh, students and staff and one of the best way possible. Uh, and just kind of thinking about the extension um, and and thinking about the timelines, it's also something that I would support it. Um, in the conversation. Additionally, I think there's some other things that we can do. To help support that work that don't necessarily require work. So things like an update to some of the posters or some other things, logistical things that can happen that don't have to wait until a year yet. So I think that would be helpful. Um. So I'm looking forward to future meetings and I continue to support that work. So I think that's really great. Uh, another update, uh, we did receive Friday close out. The two week date from receiving uh, an application for taking board position. So we did receive an application um, that has confirmed for the area that is open. Um. And we received some positive feedback for the way that we reached out. We use postcards that went to each of the doors in that particular area. So I think that strategy. Turned out to be pretty effective. Wanted to at least get one application. Um, I would also suggest that probably be uh, something that we put into our policy about figuring out how we can get something out to folks. And uh, thinking about open positions that may be coming up for this fall. Um. I talked with Ms. Marty about ways in which we can uh, have a couple of notifications on the. Um, on the postcard that goes out, that kind of alert people on different languages. So it wouldn't be the entire test. But maybe something that notifies them about where the application is because once they scan a QR code, then it can be translated uh, online. So we want to make sure that that information is available to as many different people as possible. Uh, and if the board continues to have all five areas represented by area or district, then we want to make sure people are fine and. Are within eligible boundaries in those particular areas. So um, I think it'd be a good ultimate strategy uh, moving forward. So now it will be following the rest of the policy around timeline and strategy. So. We'll be confirming the timelines in the remaining process. The board has gone through this process previously. Uh, to replace the board members in the past. So we're going to follow that same uh, process. So we'll be getting that out to all board members and align the person who completed the application. Hold on then, that one, that's all. Uh, let's see, there have been several celebrations um, this month and recently. Um, lots uh, just around celebrating Black History Month as well as student growth in our schools. So there have been a lot of really great supportive. Um, opportunities for students to showcase their academic. Uh, improvement. And this isn't necessarily about, we've talked about some of this before. It's not about hitting the grade level pieces, it's just about showing that improvement. Uh, throughout the school year. So I think it's been, uh, while we're seeing we have a lot of students who are very excited about their growth and they're still. The good news about growth is there's still more growth that can happen. So it's not limited to one thing. Um, and I think, you know, we have a lot of uh, really excited students here interested in their education. So I'm really excited about that. And then uh, the last piece that I wanted to touch on, uh, we did have for this week's recent equity trainings scheduled for our admin staff. But those are having to be rescheduled. Those were supposed to be Wednesday anniversary this week, but one of our trainers is still, and so we can do those. They are being rescheduled um, for a time in um, Manly that are already correlating with some of the um. recent equity training that we have are rescheduled. So we're just cacking that on. We got two days, early July, early three, uh, on top of the two days. So. Yeah, that's what I have for this week.
Any questions? Do you have any? Um, just let people know, we do get the uh, interview for the person applied for the video board as that will be a level of the, as everything so in there to come. Um, see how that goes. There will be that once we get it scheduled. Um, okay. Uh, next is Director's Report. Let's start.
Sure. Well, I attended the CTE of the House, which are very well presented. And I think that anything that's going on. And um, visitor.
Okay.
Um, yeah, the CTE event was great. Um. And uh, I have been on behalf of the board taking some coffee and snacks around to the school. We've gotten Foster and Showalter done and we'll hopefully get the elementary snacks next week as well as some, uh, we did the. Transportation and so the service center and we'll get admin also. So that's been fun. Um, just greeting the teacher, the staff as they come in in the morning with coffee and treats. Um. And I I've spent quite a bit of time. Giving some extra support to the uh, some of the students that are living in temporary shelter. At uh, Riverton Park. And uh, trying to figure out how to help them be successful. With school. So that's mine. Thank you.
Thank you. So. I took it to the CTE of the House. One of the things I found that was really interesting about that is the number of um. Parents from there, what there's, there's um, middle school students and we're just hoping out, you know, which classes should I be in, which class should I take and so. Each is gonna be out of selling their programs and we'll see who wins at the end. But their students know what's happening. So that's uh, that was great. Open house, you had, I think, one, two, three. Four, five, six, seven different programs. So we got a CD which is great. It's a wide range from. Biotech, robotics, construction, culinary, environmental science, media arts and business management. So. Um. Let's see, actually in the previous meeting, I kind of talked about the issue of the after-school programs and the good is that we have. And the after-school programs, particularly elementary students, but it's almost like they're overlapping each other and and students are having to. Kind of figure out, you know, which ones and to go to, they're onto multiples of them. And so we kind of amassed a schedule of after-school programs so that we can maximize the number of programs that they can. Uh, partake in um. At Cascade View, you know, we have Champions, we have Disney and school we have Revy, so we have athletics programs, which is. Great for all of them, but um, many students wanted to stay in multiples of them. So. And sometimes I think they're overlapping in ways that maybe we could avoid it if there was kind of a schedule laid out for some of these things. Um. The, yeah, kind of slow in here to the legislative day. So last kind of days, I was down in Olympia um. With the the School Directors Association, was the, the, the Association, was the. Um, School Business Association, what was the CFOs and the different districts. And we were talking to the legislature about um. Uh, a couple of issues. So the process that we go through was everybody. Kind of each one of those organizations has different processes, but in the School Directors Association, you have an assembly where all school districts get together, representatives and decide. You know, what are the biggest issues? And usually kind of go down to three or four this year, it's actually two or selected as the biggest issues to go lobby the legislature for. And the first one was special education funding, which is substantially underfunded in all the schools. Um. Both in terms of uh, uh, CAP, so-called CAP, which is the maximum number of students that the student will pay, that are state will pay for. Which of course is completely out of sync with what schools, schools don't have the options of saying. You know, when a specialist student is identified, I'm sorry, we reach our cap. So that's not. School district don't do that. It's against the law and other things, but that's what the funding system does. So. Um, anyway, there's, there's a lot of um, lobbying around that. And then the other one was getting full funding for transportation. In particular, uh, the transportation funding system as it sits now. Um, does not really cover um, district costs around getting students experiencing homelessness. That may need to come to school, not on a school bus and the school routes, but uh, in a taxi or some other way. And also special education students who may, again, not be able to get on a regular school bus. But pass some of the requirements for getting them uh, to and from school, which again, this is a basic education issue which the state is supposed to pay for, but they're important. So. Um, anyway, there's, it was interesting. We were down there on Monday and Dennis and I went down and um, it was kind of a crazy day this year because um. It was just at the end of what they call their bill cutoffs. So when there's a cutoff on. The previous Friday, we're both the House and the Senate. Uh, there was no real, if the bill hadn't gone down with its committee origin, then it would just die this year. So. There's a mad rush at that time to get any bills that they want out. And then what happens on Monday is that there's a mad rush. To get those bills that came out of the committee on the floor and pass. So we watched, you know, TVW, for example, the House and Senate have been going long hours these last couple of days. So it it's not the greatest time to be down there on the beach. Those states are literally just all running around with their heads cut off and. We tried to, we settled our way in and we got in like, I don't know, ten minutes or maybe. If you're lucky with our Senator Housegawa and our representative Steve Burquist walked in halfway through our meeting, okay, I'm here, tell me. And that was about five minutes and then Representative Hackney, who's our other representative, he didn't, he came up, his LA came in on the Zoom call. So. It was not the optimal time. But what was kind of interesting was, and Dennis got a uh. A view into how politicians work sometimes. So we brought up the issue of. Special education funding and one of the favorite tactics that politicians use is they, if you bring up something they don't want to talk about, they talk at the top of their minds. And so we immediately started talking about, what, did you guys come down and advocate for any more progressive uh. Taxes, taxes. So we would have money to provide those types of things. So I mean, yeah, we're progressive taxes. So anyway, it was, I think, um. Uh, Dennis was entertained by what was going on with that. So I don't know, we see the, uh, I'm gonna kind of flow into the, I guess, the legislative report. So the big. Oh, yeah, sorry. Excuse me. Yeah, go ahead. Director Hoover, you have a report?
Um, yeah, no, no problem. It'll be really super brief. I'm gonna be really transparent with folks that don't know. I um, just had a baby. Well, I didn't. My wife just had a baby. So. Um, last Saturday. Um, so days are a little bit blurred together and I am. Yeah, that's where my mind is at right at this moment. So I'll actually be um, slipping out after um, Agenda Item. Six, where we kind of talk about what the plan um, is. But all that to say, um, I don't have a big report today. I think the one big thing that I did want to share, um, and I think I mentioned this previously, but. I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Herd and some folks from the PSESD uh, board, um, as well as the superintendent there and um, really just to kind of talk about how we can be. Um, just increase our stewardship in the community, um, and our engagement with the community, not only, and we were kind of talking about um, the uh, current vacancy um, of of on the. The director position, but also um, kind of more broadly, you know, future thinking a little bit about how we can really um, uh, just get more folks um, really um. Bought into the work that we're doing and get more folks into the fold of um, being, you know, interested in running and participating as a school board member. So. Uh, that was really exciting. Um, and I look forward to, we kind of talked about um, uh. Reconnecting again when I get back um, in uh, late April, early May to really talk about what a really strong community engagement and board, like, sorry, board community engagement plan. Would look like. So I'm excited about that. And I just thought that was a really, really valuable meeting. Um, I know for me, um, personally, not knowing a whole lot about um, the connection between our boards and that board. Um, and so it was, it was really um, great to just have that time with them and and get understanding again about how we work, we can work together. Um, and um, so yeah, that was kind of my biggest thing uh, from this month. So, thanks.
Thank you, Director Hoover, and congratulations. Um. Let's see. Okay, so the legislative stuff, we kind of referred to special applications. So what's going on with the legislative? So. Um, there are two bills that are voting, as we know, one in the House and one in the Senate, and they're changing kind of constantly in terms of trying to. There's two issues that are involved in special education funding. One is this cap that I was talking about, which. Um, currently is at thirteen point five percent. So the state, it means the state owns thirteen point five percent of our students. Who are uh, would be qualified for special education. We currently are, I think, at fourteen and a half, so they're about. Um, so, you know, there's. A bunch of students that just are not getting funded by the state, but we still have to service them in the same way we do everybody else. Um, and then the other is what's called a multiplier. That is how much each student actually gets. Those things that qualify, how much each student actually gets. And that number is um. It's currently about one additional effort or one additional, some others. Or one additional, so that you get, this is what you get, uh each student gets their basic education, and then for a special, you get double that essentially. Which is about typically for us, you know, about, you know, twenty-five several percent or whatever it needs to be. So the House bill started fourteen thirty-six, started out really good, like it was going to be raw, and then they modified it, so it's now almost nothing. Um so, and, you know, might review the cap over forty years or something like that, but. It's not um a really good thing, the the Senate bill right now is much better. It's going to increase, it's going to keep the cap, it moves it up to fifteen percent, which is better than thirteen and a half, and then. The multiplier is going to go up by about nineteen percent, we need thirty-five, thirty percent, but it's getting there. Uh so, there's going to be, uh this is going to be an ongoing uh. Drama to figure out who's going to win and what is going to come out, the answer is we won't know until the end of April. When after the, we know a little bit more, after the March um revenue forecast, and the state gets a little more idea of what money they might have. The other dynamic that's going on here is the state last year passed a capital gains tax, which was challenged as being unconstitutional. And so they've been collecting those taxes, but the Supreme Court comes in and says, no, it's unconstitutional, and boom, all that money goes away, and they have another problem. The whole of the budget, and it's not, we don't know, this this Supreme Court has the case, and they don't know when they decided, so hopefully they'll decide soon, so. Be able to figure that one out. So the transportation, um again, that one was cut back quite a bit. Although the House one, actually, they both are going to provide, uh with the passes, providing money for both. Uh transportation of special ed students and also transportation of students experiencing homelessness. Um and they would be doing this by creating a safety net, which we would need to apply for, um but. Anyway, that uh at least makes, they're kind of sidestepping the whole issue of what they really need to do is. Redo the whole funding system for our transportation works, and they um don't seem to want to move there yet. So anyway, we'll watch and see how that moves, um. Let's see, oh yeah, the one I did put down there, fifty fifty-nine, which is. Pre-deduction interest, this is the one where school districts would have to pay back interest on any lawsuits that were settled. You know, twenty years ago, thirty years ago, or whatever, that apparently has officially died, so that's good news, um. I'll be dealing with that one, um I do want to talk a little about, actually, the one at the bottom is um. Fifty forty-eight um is an interesting bill because it basically eliminates college and high school exam fees. So the way college and high school um typically works is the the school district will have a. A relationship with one of the uh four-year institutions and um. A credit to the staff in the high school to teach, you know, uh uh this is equivalent to a college course and get college credit for it. Um the problem that they've been seeing is that in order to get full credit. You have to take an exam at the end of the course, like in most college courses, and you have to pass it. And for a lot of uh students coming from low-income uh families. That apparently across the state has been a block, and students don't want to pay that or answer that, and so they don't get the credit, and they take the course, so. This bill is addressed at uh essentially the state picking up that fee, so that that would not be a block for those students, and that's. I I noted here, because I hear some discussions, Central Washington Universities, there's other, I think Arizona State, there's a lot of different institutions that have these programs, but. It would be interesting, you know, this, that would be really, this eliminating the fees would be really helpful for our students, since we have such a high. Uh percentage of students who go on the background, so this one uh remain for passing, because that would make, if we actually. Can we add what they're calling the high school programs, getting more uh of those courses available for our students, then. Uh it would be good, because they wouldn't have to worry about the fees, so. Yeah, I think that's. So any questions on, in legislative, anything, as always, if you hear about a bill that you'd like me to follow, um just let me know what it is. And we'd be happy to add it to the list.
Thank you for doing that, Dave.
Sure. Okay, I need a motion to, let's see, hence consented, any motion to approve, we can send it. It's going to be the second that we approve, we consented, or previously, I. Any opposed, opposed, intended, gender is approved unanimously. All right, so now we're to board discussion. So um what we're trying, the issue here is that um our president, um. Um President Hoover is going to be on leave of absence for, you know, six weeks or so, I think, depending on how things go. And so the question is, um how do we uh kind of split up some of the work that uh in the president's uh position? So the the normal thing is, as vice president, um I would take. Those positions, only issue of that, I don't really have the capacity to take all of the presidential position to work on, so. The the president's job is kind of is chair meetings, um work on the agenda meetings. Uh answer the um emails that come into the board, and then kind of be available for other, other issues. That if you know, if it was great, but the content of the research is coming up, and typically those are things that we work with the superintendent to. To resolve, so um the question is, how how would we, as a board, kind of want to deal with that? Um issue, and, you know, I'm, so I just showed a couple of ideas, and you guys can see what you think, one is. I'm happy to resign as vice president, I want you to take over as vice president and and then step in that position. Another way we could do is, you know, kind of divide up the work potentially. And figure out, you know, somebody do the part of it, and somebody will do part of it, I just have a, particularly right now, with the other state that's going on. And other things that I want to do that I think we've got on, so. Interested in any thoughts on having to deal with that.
So if you were to, I don't think I'm eligible.
You are.
Am I?
Yeah.
That's on you.
Yeah.
Well, I. I mean, I can do that, I can help, um. I can do that, or I can help you, and you stay.
Okay. Any thoughts?
I I prefer that to whatever we do, but I don't want to do that, I don't want to.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm, I'd be happy to resign and then have vote, vote you and vice president.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, no, it's entirely.
I don't, uh, sorry, processing, I don't think. I think I'm okay with whatever feels best um to the rest of the team. Um as far as like how best to navigate the next month and a half um or or two. Um so I I would support either choice.
Okay. This, I made a process, expected this to need to be a separate, if we were to relax. Like a different vice president. Yeah, did you say?
Yeah, I mean, that was the reason they put that on, yeah, I put that on, yeah, I had a promotion.
Yeah. Yeah. Who's that?
The other thing you could do was depending on the timeline for the interview on a vacancy. The end of, if that were to happen, you could, then actually, since that will follow the meeting, they could also.
Oh, good.
Do that, person that one, of those, and you'll have forty. Now, forty-four, remember, or fifty-four, ninety-four, forty-four, present.
Yeah.
So depending on the timelines, either way, we do, whichever one.
Yes. Okay. Is that, okay, okay, so we'll put that on the event for whatever next meeting, we can do that. Okay. Uh so in the interim, we need to consider, um we have an agenda meeting, perfect. There's good.
Yeah, um just letting you know who I need to talk to.
The day after tomorrow?
Yeah, and we, so uh last week, we just kind of waited a base center, so we hope we did, once we just shut. Kind of the proposal again, and and um rather than doing it in person, because sometimes that. Previously, we had a standard lineup, which aren't their food, so we could move it around possibly, but. I think the base center is worse, okay, and then we can just sit back on it, or anyone can sit, well, once you have all that, so we know.
Okay, you can just tell me when and where.
Okay.
Oh, are you gonna do that? Yeah. Yeah, that's my question.
Yeah. Good. And that's, I think that's what we do, yeah. Okay, good. Um, okay, question about presentations, um financial forecast. Do you have any, do you have any questions on? Mental forecast? Okay, I guess my my question is, um. Aside, we see you.
I find as well.
There, um. Okay, is there, how? If we think about, how can we get the full, I don't know, four, three, two, but. Um any ideas about, I mean, that's another, well, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars or something. Any ideas about where we might start looking for that in the next?
Um to end the twenty twenty-three school year, it would pretty much probably have to cease the A spending.
Okay, beyond.
Like literally just say, hey, we're, we are going, we're going to, we're going to cut.
I mean, beyond, I mean, just, yeah, salaries and so forth, so.
Yeah, I mean, the salaries are already in cover.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yes, I was already in cover, the only things that are still kind of out in the open, which are reflective in the uh projected income balance. Are um those extra hours and sub-costs, which can, which I, you know, put some extra cushion on those numbers. Um based on previous.
Yeah.
Years, so I, we can hope that it comes under the projection.
Okay.
Yeah, we would want to kind of have you understand what the impact of that would actually be. So it'd take us a little bit of time to go through that, to say, here's what, here's what that full stop would mean.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if you're, what we can do, maybe go through that and run through a couple scenarios about what it looks like. From one to one percent, we've just got to do that in one percent increments.
So how, am I just not reading this right, and this says one percent, and you're saying two to three?
Well, I I asked the question, you know, one percent is right, this.
Okay.
Speaker.
Um.
But I asked, um or say, oh, what does it look like? As a real listener, without getting too.
Okay, so when you updated that idea, you didn't actually update the forecast sheet?
No, that was just a, a goal and everything.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I saw the question, and then I looked back, and the.
Yeah.
Forecast wasn't there.
Yeah, the current forecast uh is predicated on nothing, like taking zero action for anything.
Okay.
And we've already spoken about, you know, making some adjustments, um so this would be further adjustments.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, um see, enrollment report, may I have any? Questions on that? It was interesting when I was looking at the, yeah, also I still lost some tournament, but. It's apparently always moved, basically.
So we will have, I guess, in March, probably the second March meeting, will be during uh our enrollment plan presentation. So with that information coming in on that, um so we'll have included in that, uh we received last week. The updated um enrollment forecast from less than recruited, it's one of those pieces. And uh just some trends that we may be seeing, there are things like heart rate day and enrollment, um some feedback we have on that. And then strategies that we're, we're thinking about um putting in place, so. We'll have a plan ready, but I want to make sure we have any time to do that, so I'm shooting for the second, second meeting in March.
Just another question, any questions on the monthly budget status reports? Thank you, um. Okay, presentations, this one is an dangerous update. Incidentally, we would have that before. So you can.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yeah.
Alrighty, good evening, Director Larson, or is it President Larson now? Okay, members of the board and Superintendent Hernan, this evening I will start by saying that the purpose of this presentation is to provide it. Representation of the timeline and work that is being done to develop a systems approach to discipline. Will we be showing the PowerPoint or no? Okay.
Yes, you can see that right here.
Okay. Got it, I I can't see it, okay, no problem, so the timeline for the district-wide um discipline referral process began. In August. And as you can see, we have a timeline here where we've been updating Skyward data, that's been an ongoing process, and it's going to continue on throughout the year. Then we had district-wide professional development that took place by sound, with sound discipline, they talked about trauma um response and restorative practices. That happened in August with the entire district, and then we have the development of our school and classroom charters, which took place in September. October and November, and then we posted mood meters throughout the schools, which happened in November and December. And then district-wide discipline referral form, we received feedback from the teachers as well as student voice, and I'm going to talk more about that. Um that happened in December, January and February, and then our schools are forming their data teams. Um currently, and it's going to be ongoing in terms of the work that the data teams will be doing, and then we have the school, the sys. I'm sorry, the Skyward and Swiss integration, which has started in December. And is continuing to be refined as we um work through the processes. Our district-wide discipline referral form um began, like I said, sometime in December. We sent out an invitation to the Equity Lees Principals, the Hope Team Students, and our Parent Advisory Committee. There was a representative group that worked with Teaching and Learning and Sound Discipline to review and co-create the dis- the district-wide referral form. From there, there were a list, there were a lot of, there was a lot of debate, and our um student representative was also there to join us. Um in terms of what should be on the form. Um once voices from the staffs. I'm sorry, say that again?
Somebody said anything?
No, no, there's no question, kind of, you're right.
Okay, once voices from staff, students, uh and our executive coaches, pa- and parents were heard. Then we um co-created the form with Teaching and Learning, co-created the form with Sound Discipline. Um to come up with one form that would be used throughout the district. Principals were then charged with going back to their representative schools and sharing the why and the purpose and the process for using the discipline referral form. Keeping at the forefront that discipline needs to teach, and so that's why, as you look through the data, you'll begin to see the drop in numbers, because. We are um being mindful that discipline needs to teach. Um schools are working with their office managers to ensure that data is entered into Skyward. And then, as you look at the um the uh data, you'll see Skyward um. View, it says Skyward, I'm sorry, Cascade View Major Referrals, and majors are refer, are. Referenced as. Is everything okay? Is everything okay?
Yeah, just copying, sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. And when you think about majors, you may be asking, what is a major? A major is um documentation for behavior that is of safety concern or physical, of physical or emotional. If a student is removed from their learning community, that it, for a significant amount of time, um it it may be considered as a major. And we're only entering majors into Skyward. So as you see Cascade View, there were fifty one majors in January and then in February, there were thirty. And then you go through, you see Thorndike had seventy and in February, there were thirty six. In January at ToCoila, there were one hundred thirty two. And then in February, there were forty eight. Showalter, there was a hundred and seven in January and then in February, there were sixty six. And then in at at Foster, there was forty in January and then we had twenty seven in February. And you may be thinking, what, what um? Why the drop? Which is good that we had a drop in our majors. Um, first of all, two things, February was not all the way over when we provided this data. And the other thing is um there is a heightened focus on achievement, academic achievement. And our students are excited about what is going on in classes and they are learning and they're being celebrated. Um, and that concludes my report.
So, yeah, yeah, so there is um another part of this, part of this conversation is really trying to make sure that we're having honest conversations about what the discipline really is. There was a conversation about that and actually referral form and what that was like. Um, one of the debates about was whether or not so one of the categories was called disrespect. And so there's a conversation about whether or not to include business stats on the form. And so we, you know, there was some competition with that because if people are using that, what does that actually mean? How is it being used? Part of the conversation was, well, maybe we should reveal the purpose. I thought it was, I don't think we should reveal it. I think we should leave it there because if people are using that category and then it's gone, they're gonna put, because there's another category as well. My feeling would be that it would move into another category. So why not just have honest conversations about what that difference is? Both from the perspective of a student and from the perspective of the adult. Because obviously that different respectful feeling can be felt all the way. Students can feel disrespected by the adults, adults can feel disrespected by students. So why not be just honest about what that means in that perception? If anything, I think that really helps us in the conversations we have about emptying understanding. So, um, I think if we, you know, there's obviously more information, this is nature referrals, we want other things like that in the mirror other things around, right? You know, all we're wanting to, you know, about how many incidents like that are happening, um assaults or fights, things like that, and we talk about other categories, um that also would fall into categories that at the time I'm fast course is addressing. We just want to be, you know, the point of the disciplines to figure out where are some of the issues that we're really having and how can we help resolve that? It's never been zero. You're probably never been in that situation because people are human and they have bad days and they make decisions that aren't great, but adults can students. And again, as Dr. Porch was talking about, this is discipline, which is meant to be teachable on us. This isn't punishment. So, and there are big differences. And I think there are times, I remember being a principal and a foster teacher, and there are times where you feel like it should be punished or other people want punishment, but this is real about, we're a learning institution, so that happens. Figure these things out, both as adults and as class students. So that's why I think this is really good information for us to continue to look at. And the data is important for us to continue to have conversations about, even if there are times when it doesn't look great. Um, you still need to have those honest conversations.
Thank you. And I would, I would also invite that as we continue to meet and refine that our student representative continues to join us just so that you can see how um this process evolves. Thank you.
Yeah, so is that recall? So I assume that we kind of really want disrespect or some other, you know, we've been a number of things that we've called in years is that is not uh considered a major referral. Or, you know.
I think it probably depends on what was said and if there's anything else that goes with it. So I think there are times where it probably could be, or there could be more than one category, but you know, the other part about the discipline that we're trying to get to is not time with students that aren't in the learning environment. And hopefully you can solve some of their discipline issues quickly so that they're not out of class or of large amount of time because if they're not in class, they're not learning.
Well, they're learning something, but maybe not.
Correct. Correct. And again, this is, you know, we're reading about the whole chat. So part of this is, you know, learning about your emotions and how you respond to that, how you respond to other people, the stereotypes of their emotions. So that's kind of the social emotional learning that we talk about. Data is one of those areas that you can't quantify, but it's not the whole thing. So hopefully that qualitative piece is about how to deal with that. And we talked about it before, how show walkers gone through a lot of restorative practices to really eliminate some of that and kind of sell those issues away. Hopefully our work with standard, we've seen if we put more of these things in place, we're hoping that remember major referrals would have been on because both adults can, so you can learn ways to address issues before they turn into new issues because they can see indicators that might be taken down.
Okay, so that that general was standard categories of disrespect and whatever. Yeah, I guess the other thing, I I assume that the minor referrals are kept in Swiss, is that good? Yeah.
Correct, yes.
Okay, because I know, I mean, one of the reasons is that you know, things that start out as minor referrals, you know, entry can be, they're not, they're not dealt with appropriately, can be major referrals or something. So, um, yeah, I think it's a board deep track of, you know, deep track of law and and uh do with it. But, yeah, so the, you're saying the ones that are the Skyward ones are the ones that are going to be reported, those, yeah, that basically the
inceders. So, yeah, we have a state requirement of reporting the receipt. And so this, these are a home scatter, should make that process easier.
Majors are cedars reportable.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Do any thoughts?
Yeah, um, I took a question. So the referral form that we had that meeting about, if it hasn't been implemented?
Yes.
Okay. And last time I looked at it, I, there was a section that we talked about having um someone check up on this during a week after the incident, after the portal. So has that been done? Are are people still, you know, doing that because that's touching on the resort practice piece?
That is um part of the things that the principals do as well as the teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments on this question about this one? Yeah, it's good. Look for, I mean, I think having the uniform way of doing difficult to choose data in the past, we never know exactly what's being reported and for one reason. So having an informed, I think, of this sort of, yes. Okay, uh, let's move on to actuarials. So I need a motion to approve policies for twenty and forty five.
So.
So move it second, that we approve policies for twenty and forty five. Is there any discussion questions? No, all papers at? You know, although, no, no, it's approved unanimously.
Really important to all actors, same five. There's only three.
When I marry people and I ask their families if they support that my major is, they say, three or four times.
That's what I'm saying. All right, the next one, uh, approval of the CCIs. A leadership conference, Manachi, I need a motion to approve.
I'm not just ask what?
Yeah, let's put it on there. Both and moved at any circumstance. Okay. The general procedure that we can prove about that filter now, certainly, please. Yeah.
And then this, this on route policy question for me about shadowings and ratios. And so that was in our policies, we had when my standards practice would always be with or two adults, even if there's only one kid, because that one though is one kid and one adult and that adult gets sick, that kid is left without someone to take care of them. So um I would, if it's not our policy, then I know that we have to hold on to it, but I would sure suggest that anytime our kids go on or nine, I just, that there's at least two adults.
Okay, let's put that in for review of the policy and discuss what we want to do. Require our policy to, I know it's been, I don't know how often it comes up and probably more than once, it's kind of, it's on the table. So, and, yeah, I could hear the discussion right now. Okay. There's no, okay. Well, if there's no question, I'll pay to say aye.
Aye.
Do you oppose? I oppose, you actually approve, okay. Um. So, second over the comment period, is there anybody who really wants to comment on the others? You can either raise your hand or put your request.
If there's something happen to them.
There's the trap. That was it. Yeah, you stood. Um. Or raise your hands. Yeah, and zoom and we'll make sure this happens. Like nobody's coming in, so. We'll pose, we'll have a comment period and we wish to hear.
I'll go on. So.
Do you need a second to hear? Obviously, I have. And we are, thank you very much.
Okay.